Like to call to order the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners Legislative Meeting for Wednesday, March 12th, 2025. We'll begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, the routine justice for all.
We'll begin our meeting with public participation on agenda items only. So agenda items before us today, public participation is three-minute cap. And we are being livestreamed just for the public to be aware of. So public participation begins now. Is anyone interested in public participation on agenda items only?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Nice to see you all. I noticed that there are a lot of appointments on today's agenda. And it looks to me like a lot of these appointments are political favors and politically connected. In addition, as I look on here, we have spouses that are serving on different boards. I don't know that I like the optics in that. And there may be people here who really have backgrounds that relate to the work that they're doing on these boards and commissions. But again, because we cannot access anything about them, other than through right to know, and you don't have a public interview process or even a link to their resumes, there's no way of knowing. So once again, it's a very opaque process of how people get to this point. And I also know that several people who applied for boards and commissions, because you all did make a good faith effort to advertise that you had all of these openings, none of them were chosen and none of them even received a thank you for applying notice. That is concerning to me. Thank you.
On our agenda today, it does not reflect all of the board openings, just for the public's information to understand that we have many more to make. So I'm sure thank yous will go out following appointments being made, because we are grateful for everyone who applied.
Go to the size of our township. Well, number eighteen under matters requiring board action is an agreement between Dolphin County Prison and M3T Corporation to provide security equipment and services for a one-year term. I was hoping that someone could explain what the services and just like quickly what the services and equipment were. Because I don't remember hearing that at a prison board meeting, like maybe.
So that wouldn't be a prison board matter because it is an annual contract maintenance agreement that is actually it is emergency management handles the entire contract, but each department that uses it gets their own piece of the contract. So it's a countywide contract that is managed by EMA and it doesn't, that one doesn't necessarily go before the prison board. So yes, you are correct. You did not see that.
Okay, thank you. And then the services, I'm assuming it would just be like security services and equipment.
Correct. It's the security cameras. Do you want to speak to it?
All the cords and the cables, all the cords and the cables and stuff, yeah?
Right, but not the initial purchase because you'll see a little later, we are actually working on a new project for new cameras that we got a grant for that'll include new cable, but then we'll still have the ongoing maintenance contract to maintain it, to maintain the software, to maintain all of that. But you will see that at a prison board. We did get a grant to get some new cameras.
All right. Thank you for that. Appreciate that. And then number twenty-five, and again, I don't know if anyone can answer to this, but I just didn't understand what it is. And it's agreement between the sheriff and OCV LLC for a mobile app. And it says external. So I was wondering, is this like an app people can use for the sheriff's office or like that's a thing? I didn't even know about it. So like.
It's brand new. That's why you don't know about it. It hasn't launched yet.
Oh, it would be great if like, I know the funding's getting approved, but like it would be great to hear about it.
Vince, could you also please describe what the act eight funding means?
Okay, thank you for that. And then and just like in the future, like I think like approving money is like the a big function of what you guys do. But having the departments that request the money or some type of information would be great because otherwise you have to understand, you have to know the things and we can't know until you tell us. And I know it's my time, but I just have one more thing. Two, I lied too. One is engagement letters number twenty-eight from McNeese Wallace McNurick. This is quick. It says includes two individual contracts for two individual named employees. I'm just noting that the individual employees aren't named. I do not need their names. But if you're going to say named employers, you should name them. So maybe don't put that on there. And then I just have a question about number thirty-three about clearing land. I think I'd love to hear more about the idea of the clearing land for residents attempting to move to. I do know that they're sweeping the encampment, the current encampment that a lot of people are living in. So I'm not like opposed to any money, but I just wonder what that means. And then it says that eventually it would be future very low income housing. I'd love to hear what very low income means. And I would also like to know what would happen to the people who would lawfully tent there at the time in which it converts to or begins the construction of that. Your income? Thank, and that's it.
Anyone else for public comment on agenda items? All right, seeing none, approval of minutes. We'll begin by approving the February nineteenth workshop meeting and legislative meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, moved by Commissioner Priest. Seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carries. Approval of minutes for February twenty-sixth salary board meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Controller Bateman, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carries. Executive session is held between meetings. Mr. Priest.
Good morning, Commissioners. On March eleventh, the Commissioners held an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding consideration on the purchase and lease of real property, RFP processes, active impending litigation, board appointments, tax matters, bond proceeds, and personnel matters.
Great. Directors and guests, or any questions of Mr. Priest? All right, hearing none. We'll begin with Ms. Weed.
I'd like to request a vote for salary board items A and B.
Do I have a motion for salary board items A and B?
So moved.
Second.
Third. Well, moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Controller Bateman. Any discussion?
Are these within the budgeted numbers for 2025?
They are, yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then for the personnel packet items, one through ninety-six, we didn't have any that we voted on the last week, so the whole packet.
I'll make a motion. We adopt the personnel packet as presented.
Do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Budget and Finance Director, Mr. Davis.
Morning, Chris. Couple of different things today. I have no changes, or there's no changes to the investment report that was sent out yesterday. There's also no changes to the purchase order packet that was distributed that's ready for your consideration approval.
Do I have a motion for the purchase order packet?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carries.
Also, on the agenda, we have the bid award for the Fort Hunter Stream Bank stabilization project. For that project, we received five bids. The lowest bidder on further research and in consultation with Solicitor's Office here, we are rejecting their bid as they could not comply with the terms of the responsible contractor ordinance, specifically the apprenticeship program. So we are recommending you award to what is the lowest responsible bidder, Flyway Excavating, for a cost of $164,450 as their bid amount.
Great. Can we, can we speak to just a little bit of this project at all? Maybe, I don't know if I would like to share just as we're, as we're requesting to award this bid. I just want to ensure that we get a sense of the project for the public.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everybody. This project called the Fort Hunter Fishing Creek Bank Stabilization Project is a project that started with Tropical Storm Ida, September first, 2021. And so that storm effectively created extreme erosion in the Fort Hunter Park property along the banks of Fishing Creek. And so this project will stabilize that stream bank as it is to prevent further erosion. Which with each storm that has come since then, that eroded, already eroded bank continues to erode. And so this will stabilize that with an imbricated rock wall and intermittent plantings. This funding for this project is provided by FEMA. So this was an active FEMA project. The county has already received that funding and that funding will cover the costs of both engineering for this project as well as construction.
Any further questions? All right. Thank you so much, Anthea. Are you looking for a vote for this bid award that we voted on it today? Do I have a motion for to award the bid to Flyway Excavate, correct?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you. Chief Clerk's report. Mr. Priest.
Good morning, Commissioners. I do have one item to report. At the recommendation of the Solicitor's Office, the Board has made the decision to retract the current RFP for Professional Engineering Services and restructure the RFP to better serve the needs of the county and to provide proper guidance to interested firms on what services the county is seeking. Chief Clerk and the Solicitor's Office expect to have the new RFP issued by Memorial Day, which is May twenty-sixth of this year.
Thank you. Solicitor's report, or any questions of Mr. Priest before we.
I think we're doing that for due diligence as when we rolled out the RFP, more questions came in than we had answers. So we decided to take a step back and make sure that we have this properly done prior to rolling it out.
Have a more thorough RFP. Yep.
Yeah, that is correct.
Yes, okay. Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner. With the exception of numbers one through fifteen, because the Solicitor's Office does not review board appointments, matters requiring board action, the balance of those items have been reviewed and approved by the Solicitor's Office for action by the Board today.
Any questions of Mr. Owens? Hearing none, we'll move on to matters requiring board action. We have items one through sixty-four for, in front of us for approval today. Are there any items that need to be pulled and voted on separately?
Yes, items five, or item five, six, seven, nine, ten, and fourteen.
I'll make a motion that we approve items one through four. Item eight. Item eleven through thirteen. And item fifteen through sixty-four. I believe that's taking out the ones that Commissioner Hartwick had pulled.
Second.
Any discussion? I do want to discuss just momentarily, as there was question in the public about, I believe it was, was it item number thirty-three? We've, we've long been looking into our encampment challenges with the expansion of I-83. It's something that Randy Jaeger and myself have spent a lot of time meeting along with the mayor and the governor's office to discuss how, how that's going to be remedied, given the challenges that are going to displace over a hundred people. And one of the plans that became a possibility was this option. Do we think it's the best option? Do we think it's the perfect option? Do we think it's the silver bullet that solves all the problems? Absolutely not, but it's a step forward in providing an option and there'll be more details on it in the future. But ultimately, the hope is that it will, in the long term, provide affordable housing. But in the meantime, allow for an option when that displacement takes place and that we can do that with as much dignity as possible. And so that's what I'm committed to and that's what all of those who have been working on that have been, have been committed to. So that's what is represented there on item number thirty-three, because that was a question in the public. Are there any more comments that we need to make before we vote?
Yeah, I think it's important to highlight thirty-seven. That's a new agreement with Volunteers of America that quite frankly steps in into a gap that has existed for quite some time. Many times as we're examining individuals who can be released from prison, who obviously homelessness seems to be the, the number one challenge in figuring out a way to ensure that they can transition back into the community. But with a lot of folks that are transitioning in and out, they have bad credit history and sort of a bad experience with landlords. In this case, Volunteers of America has agreed to step in to be the actual lessor to ensure that that won't be a barrier. And after a certain amount of time, two years, ultimately they'd like to transition at least to the individual. But until they're able to establish credit history and a track record, they certainly won't allow that to be the deterrent from somebody transitioning back into the community. So I want to thank them for that effort and I think it's a creative way to address housing as being a major barrier to reentry.
If I may add, because this is part of the matters requiring board action, including several that were pulled out for separate vote by my colleague, Commissioner Hartwick. But Chief of Staff, Assistant Chief of Staff, Vince Priest. Are we able, and the reason I'm asking this is because as a result of placing these board appointments on the agenda, a lot of people have, have noticed this as opposed to us saying apply. And I'm getting reached out to by a lot of people saying, we didn't know, now they know. And I believe that we are accepting additional applications and I want to just say to the residents, feel free to keep applying. We have quality people that have applied that aren't on this list that we're going to keep taking up. This is not the full list, but if you're interested in applying, apply for these positions. We have people that have served on multiple boards in the past and currently, and if there's an opportunity for individuals to serve on one board as opposed to two or maybe even three, let's get the residents in here and serve this board and this, and the, and the county on a lot of these boards that are open. So as we fill these, are you doing something with IT to close out or how are we doing that moving forward?
So we do need to update our page as this is a new process, as we've opened it up to the public. The idea would be, yes, just if you are still interested in any of the boards that are still open, you can continue to send them to me as it's stated on the webpage. I will have the page reflected now that we are starting to fill these spots. As Commissioner Priest did note, there are many more boards that we need to fill. Even some of the boards we have listed still have other openings that still need filled. So yes, it's been the Board's decision to have everyone continue to apply if you do wish to. And when all the boards, when we get through this. And when all the boards, when we get through this round of open boards, I will be sending out, uh, communications to everyone who did apply.
And I think this has done exactly what we wanted it to do, but by putting this on the agenda, it's got a lot more attention now. Folks are saying, "Oh, we would like to potentially serve too." So send in your applications for appointments. I want to thank my colleagues. This is the first time this was ever done, reaching out publicly, and now we're going to have a continuation of that. Thank you.
I do believe, um, next year, it's at least my intention that we get this process started sooner so that we have plenty of time to review and that we can even make these appointments, uh, months before the turnover. Uh, so that, you know, we're in March now and many of these appointments open up January one. Uh, or, you know, some have been open even longer than that. And so, uh, we definitely want to make sure we're making these appointments sooner if possible. But, uh, we do have a, a motion and a second before us of items, uh, one through, uh, let's see here, one through sixty-four, subtracting five, six, seven, nine, ten, and fourteen. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Uh, we'll begin with, uh, item number five.
So for item number five, again, just to set a little bit of context, I was unaware that we were acting on these until Monday. Um, so I, I received this list with, um, you know, names that were slotted in. I know we were all supposed to provide names to the chief clerk related to who our interests were and who we wanted to support. Um, and when I checked with, uh, the chief clerk, no one had submitted a list to them at that point. So I've, I've got a full list and am willing to submit, uh, my list for consideration. But on the first point, um, the, uh, the appointment of, uh, Jose Gonzalo Pereira Rivera and Carrie Furlough. We have categories in drug and alcohol that are required to be filled by statute. And there are rules and regulations that folks need to fit into those categories. Um, we also have a, uh, individual who has been, uh, submitted their application six months ago, who was recommended by Randy Jaeger for, for a student position. Uh, her name is Monica Geary. Uh, she's from Central Dolphins. She wanted to have a future in, uh, human services and it's sort of just been, uh, sitting there and, uh, obviously an engaged student from one of our local school districts who wants to get involved and have a future in social work. I think we should give them a meaningful opportunity to participate. Um, so that, that would have been my recommendation for the student. And for Carly Furlough, I, I've not been able to research a lot about their background, but the only thing I believe she, she could fit into is the community category. But when I researched that and took a look at the rules, uh, that community spot is reserved for somebody who's economically disadvantaged by residence or employment. So not knowing a whole lot about the background of, uh, Ms. Furlough, I don't know if she would qualify for, uh, either of those, uh, categories. So ultimately, I, I cannot vote for those based upon, uh, not knowing if they qualify for the categories and not having any consideration.
If I could, just for point of clarification, for the, uh, Acting Chief of Staff, um, the, so we have the student position. I believe there's five positions for the drug and alcohol, student, and then there's an at-large, which could be under any category. That's another one, correct?
I only mentioned the ones that were listed here. We also have law enforcement. We have a senior. They've all, also submitted.
Yes. But for the ones we have today, uh, I believe that they both, uh, would fit within the category, student and at-large.
I guess my understanding from when I had asked the question, uh, I guess I thought community, potentially community membership had a bit more, I'll say leeway. So I guess it would be my, just if we're trying to play the safe and move everything forward. If you make this recommend, if you accept these two, or if we're speaking specifically about Carly, pending that she does qualify for, uh, that community member.
Wouldn't it be fair to say that all board appointments are pending, that they meet the requirements?
I think that's, uh, is a fair statement.
And in the event that they do not, we would ratify that appointment.
That is fair.
Public meeting. Okay.
So again, I would ask, what would be the process for me to have student considered? She's been here. She's had her application in for.
Was, was the student on our list?
Uh, the original list.
Are you aware?
I, it's not on the list that we have in front of us.
Not on the list. Well, it's not on the list that we had in our board appointment packet for weeks now.
I'm going to make a motion for approval of item five.
I'm going to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Number six, appointment of Eric Epstein, the Dolphin County General Authority. Any discussion? I'll make a motion to accept number six. Any discussion? Hearing none.
I reached out to, uh, the members of that, that board, including the chair, and was told that, uh, Mr. Epstein, since being appointed that position, and I've, I've been actively, uh, watching that, uh, appointment over the last year, uh, and the work done on that board. And I've been told by the folks there that the individual has, has served exemplary, uh, actively engaged, uh, more prepared than pretty much any board member that has served there. So therefore, um, outside of any, uh, reasoning, do not continue the engagement of appointment for Eric Epstein for the Dolphin County General Authority. I'm going to support that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Uh, number seven, appointment of Shane Steele as a member of HAT's Technical Committee.
Yeah, I, I had, uh, a resume that I forwarded, um, for a Mr. Jason Wagner, uh, as well as my recommendation was Jason Wagner for the Technical Committee and Doug Brown, uh, for the actual, um, Policy Committee. Uh, Jason is someone who, um, is, it, he spends his life in transportation. He lives in Lower Swatara. Um, he works for the Associated Pennsylvania Constructors. He's the Director of Policy and Government Relations. He does specifically highway and transportation issues. I think our board could really use a level of expertise. I don't even know if the guy is a Republican or Democrat, but my, my conversations with him, he's extraordinarily skilled and can really provide a sense of direction on a board that could use a little bit more technical knowledge. So that would have been my recommendation. And for the, uh, other one, it was Doug Brown related to, uh, his current work. His Chief of Staff for Senator Kim as well as his background in economic development.
I'll make a motion for number seven, appointment of Shane Steele as a member to HAT's Technical Committee. Is there a second? Hearing none. Motion fails. Number nine, uh, appointment of Fred Falona to, uh, Dolphin County, uh, IDA, uh, board to fill unexpired term.
Can I make one just note for both IDA appointments? Uh, they will also serve on the EDC.
Yes.
Just trying to make that for the public.
I'll make a motion to adopt number nine.
And, uh, I guess we need a second for comments.
Yes. Is there a second? Hearing no second. Motion fails.
Could, could I just make a comment? The recommendations I made there were Jonathan Sider from, uh, Ben Franklin Technologies and, uh, Westburn Majors, former city council member, and somebody who I believe could have added, you know, a great deal of perspective from the city.
Appointment of Glory Martin Roberts and Margaret Durkin to the Dolphin County Library Board.
Still moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just did not have enough time to look into Ms. Durkin. She sounds like a qualified individual, but just not knowing who she is. Uh, I can't, uh, reasonably vote for somebody.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Appointment of Tom Connolly to the Dolphin County RDA to fill an unexpired term for number fourteen on the agenda. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second? Motion fails. Former business. Any former business? I'm seeing none. Any new business?
Just one thing I'd like to know from the Aging Department. Um, they have been making a significant amount of progress. Um, in July of twenty twenty-three, our Aging Department, uh, and Protective Services had about eleven hundred, well, not about, it was eleven thirty-eight cases that were open. Uh, they had a, a staff that was limited and, um, they, they were struggling. We had external contracts and I don't think of many more important things that we could be doing, uh, than protecting our senior citizens. Uh, today I want to say that, um, through the leadership of Ben Knox and, uh, a solid recruitment effort, training and a great fiscal office, they're building one heck of a team. Um, we are down to a hundred and sixty-six cases, which now allows each one of the people in the Protective Service Unit to be under thirty cases, to allow for the level of attention necessary to make sure that no one is slipping through the cracks and we are able to do the investigations and in a way that is going to ensure both financial exploitation or physical harm is not going to happen to our older adults. And just to remember, uh, we do have a hotline if anybody wants to call in and report suspected abuse. One eight six six safe one one one. One eight six six safe one one one. That's all I have.
Did you have anything else for Commissioners' discussion? Or was that Commissioners' discussion?
It was.
Commissioner Priest?
Anything?
Okay. Um, I want to thank our facilities and maintenance teams for their, uh, them dedicating significant time and effort to move our, uh, economic development. Uh, Economic Development is now in our facility, uh, here at the admin building on the first floor. Uh, and so, um, Facilities Maintenance, uh, worked really hard to make that a smooth and efficient, uh, transition. And I'm thankful for, uh, all their work in organizing that and ensuring that that, um, met the timeline, uh, that it needed to. Uh, also want to reference that, uh, Commissioner Priest and I had the, the privilege of, um, being at Millworks, uh, last week for the celebration of the Millworks ten-year anniversary. Ten years of, of Millworks in that space and thinking through the, the amount of, uh, local farmers and local artists that have been supported by that, uh, particular establishment. Proud to see, uh, their continued success, given, you know, the reality that it, it's very hard to, to run a restaurant, uh, for, you know, ten years to, to make it to ten years. Uh, you know, in, in business, uh, we're, we're excited for them and thankful for their contribution to our region. Uh, with that, uh, correspondence, I'm seeing no correspondence. Um, public participation, um, at this point, this is open public participation. Reminder, we do have that three-minute limit and we are, uh, being live streamed. Anyone for public participation?
Go ahead. I can wait.
You go ahead. How we doing?
I just wanted to say, um, am I allowed to read this to you? I'm sending this to the governor about my father.
Could you provide your name?
Sure. If you provide your name. Yeah, yeah. Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Um, I, Robert Gross, I'm writing you on behalf of my father, Larry Thomas Zeguro, zero six nine oh four seven, who is eighty-one years old. And he has multi, uh, multi, 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 uh, chronic care issues that threaten his life, his health while he's detained in the Sixth Worth Prison in the country, um, known as Dolphin County Prison. My father has been in, uh, D, DCP for over five years without being brought to justice by the Commonwealth Courts, which in, uh, fact is a, uh, constitutional violation. Um, also, um, uh, I've, I fired an attorney, okay, I'm not going to say his name, which also has played a factual role in a delay of the court, uh, proceedings. Dolphin County Prison has a shortness, uh, of staff in, uh, every department. And the com, uh, Commissioner nor, uh, nor the warden, uh, has solved anything, which you guys have solved some things for me. I do want to say that. I do appreciate your help very much, so. Which the prisoners are held inside their cells for twenty, twenty-two hours a day. There is no, uh, law library, nor any, uh, weekly religious services, nor any programs for rehabilitation. But their, their employees are working and getting paid while assigned to the prisoners, to the prison, which is, uh, fraud. Um, Dolphin County's security force is understaffed. So it is, um, so is the medical department, which threatens the life of safety of all prisoners. There is a, uh, factual history of, um, uh, neglect in which results in death of prisoners and nor the staff are held accountable for that. My father has served in the military for thirteen, for, um, in the military. He has thirteen children and his children are dependent on him for the knowledge and love of his wisdom. A, uh, motion for, uh, con, con, I don't know what that is. Um, my father suffers from multi, um, physical, um, uh, ailments, which is, his life is held in Dolphin County Prison, which needs a, uh, uh, and needs to go, uh, treated and, uh, scheduled to have a, uh, assess mental health and, um, m- medical appointments, but they are delayed. The justice system era in bringing him to justice, sir, um, I know you, uh, your office is in a legal office, nor can you, uh, provide legal, uh, assistant, which I understand. But you can, uh, serve, save lives, especially when, uh, Dolphin County Prison has a history of staff neglect, staff abuse and staff corruption, which the news reported is factual events, but no change takes place. Sir, there is no infirmary or NDCP and, uh, medical, uh, system is backed up due to, uh, court and there is no other, oh, the, it's a virus, uh, that threatens the, the lives of the prisoners. And the staff department should, uh, be closed, uh, or should be closed down due to the staff not working or not in full factual, um, operation in, in every department and also the staff's remote, uh, illusion, like you are, um, uh, transparency, excellence, uh, uh, filed or whatever. There is no evidence of things, sir, that I hope that you, uh, will use your authority to change the conditions so that in twenty twenty-five, prisoners will not commit suicide or kill due to the physiological defects that take place from overworked staff members. I am a citizen of the Commonwealth and I urgently, uh, ask you to, uh, contact the Commissioner, Justin Douglas, who's from you, uh, which you helped a lot, sir, and, uh, ask him about all that, uh, reported to you. That, sir, prisoners are, um, personal, uh, incidents yet, but of the, uh, uniform and their title inmates, they are, um, mistreated daily and I sincerely remain, um, uh, remain Robert Gross. Um, I just wanted to, uh, get that across, but I mean, uh, his children, uh, are a big thing in his family. But I mean, to be there for as long as he has, uh, there are some things that are ha- happening right now that you helped tremendously with, which I appreciate it. Um, but I mean, it is something that really needs to be addressed that they're not, they're understaffed and they're not taking care of the prisoners like they should. And they are committing suicide. There are people dying there. And, uh, my father, uh, he was in the military. Uh, he's, he served his time. Uh, you know, he did all that for everybody, but I mean, he's not getting the right treatment. I mean, uh, he's deteriorated since he's been there. He used to have, uh, no cane and then he had his cane. Then he had a walker and it's going worse. Now we can barely walk by being locked up for twenty-two, uh, hours a day. That's inhumane. I mean, they don't even do that to animals. You know what I mean?
Thank you for your comments and, uh, we'll continue to, to chat.
I do appreciate it very much.
Your father's case. Thank you.
Sir.
Yep.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And, um, yeah, I'll talk to you later. Thank you.
Anyone else for public participation? Mr. Buss, how are you?
Brilliant.
Hey, really quick, before we start the clock on him, I want to say this. You brought up that the clock wasn't working. And the clock is working now. And I want to say, although it did not spring forward this weekend, unfortunately, so it is an hour off. But it is moving. It is moving now. So thank you for your comments. I would assume your comments, uh, uh, made, made, made that happen. So way to go.
You know what? And they didn't spring it forward.
Don't get it. Don't get it.
That's my point. No, that's my point. It's just a little thing. It's just a little thing, but when the children are getting off, off school, the clock is wrong. When somebody's going to court, if you, if you're supposed to be in court at three o'clock and you look at that clock and you go to court, you're going to jail. You're going to DCP. And there is a virus in the air out in DCP and they should be making some tests, doing some tests out there. But I'm not only, I got a guy, his name is Richard Farr, he's the Executive Director from CAC. He's the one that should be on the bubble about this clock because it's wrong right now. We need to spring forward and it says a precedent throughout the Commonwealth that Harrisburg, capital city, doesn't want to spring forward. And so I'm, I'm, I'm asking you to call this guy, who's the Executive Director, to spring us forward and help us out by keeping this on time. The other thing I want to talk to you about is I'm going to start a campaign to get our Civil War Renaissance, to have a Renaissance for our Civil War heritage. We have, we have the strongest Civil War heritage in the country and I think that would help us in our events and bringing tourists to Harrisburg. I'm willing, I want to raise the flags of all the regiments that were mustered up at Camp Curtain, which is close to four hundred and seventy-seven flags, in which we can fly across the State Street Bridge because we have flag toppers on top of our lights. We could run a series of four that have no, that are different. Every flag is different. We can run a series of four flags across our State Street Bridge, a series of four, and we'll never have two flags the same. I believe we owe that to the state as well as our citizens so they can learn of our, of our contribution to freedom as a whole. Because freedom started here in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. We don't act like it, but it did. And I just want to make sure, my petition campaign was about the clock. Now I'm going into the next wave and it's about our Civil War heritage and bringing some events here because we know liberty and we know freedom. It starts in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public participation?
Lee.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just Nick DeFrancesco, Dolphin County Treasurer. So I just want to remind the public that might be watching and the public in general that we are slowly working our way through the two percent property tax discount period that property owners in Dolphin County gain that two percent benefit if they pay their taxes prior to March thirty-first. I want to remind them that that clock is ticking and we're getting down to the wire. Once that date passes, that discount is no longer available to them for any reason, including I didn't get a bill or whatever it might be. Just a reminder, property owners are responsible for paying their taxes annually. That burden falls on them. So if you've not yet received your bill, reach out to our office. Very simply, email us at treasurer@dolphincounty.gov. We'll turn around and get a bill out to you very, very quickly. But if you want to take advantage of that two percent discount, you got to get it in by March thirty-first. So just a reminder to the public, the clock's ticking.
Thank you so much, Treasurer.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Gina Vasquez. So I just, I just wanted to say some comments about the appointments that you guys made for the boards. I did reach out and I submitted my application and the reason why I wanted to several and to some that I one hundred percent qualify for. And the reason why I did it was because I wanted to make sure that when they meet, the board meets, that they have someone that can actually speak for the community. And I don't, I want to make sure that because of whatever I had written previously, because I sent him my applications, I think the first day you put it out, I sent him my applications, that that's not held against me. Or whatever opinion that I put out on Penn Live. I just want to make sure that that's not held against me and that's why I'm not on here because for the opiate remediation board, I've never even heard of that board until I saw it. So I just want to make sure that you guys, I just wanted to put that out there.
I'll speak from my perspective, it was not in any way held against you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pam Parsons, City of Harrisburg. First of all, I'd like to thank Commissioner Hartwick for bringing us up to speed on Department, on the Office of Aging and the Adult Protective Services. That is so important. And we've been reading the horror stories that have been coming out of Philadelphia and some of the other parts of the state in failure to follow through and find seniors who are living in unsafe conditions. So I really appreciate that. I also appreciate that this morning's appointments to boards and commissions was a very enlightening process. Even though I thought I understood a lot about that, having gone through that process myself. I appreciated knowing that there are certain statutes which say that certain people need, certain types of people or groups need to be filled on those boards and commissions. So what I would like to ask the Commissioners to consider doing is to create a webpage or whatever it needs within the, within the county website that has what boards, not only what boards and commissions need people, but more importantly, how to apply. Because I've learned through this process that the standard county application does not apply in certain boards, like the Conservation District, which I only found out because a friend who is a botanist applied. And then she found out that there was this whole different set of ways and rules to get appointed to that commission. Also, the time commitment. What is the time commitment if you are going to serve on that particular board? How often do they meet? When do they meet? Where do they meet? And what is the scope of work? Like what are they looking for? And it would be great if each board or commission that has an opening that is clickable, that you can click on that and it takes you to that information where you can find out who's needed on there and what the time commitment is. And this is so important because beyond you three as elected officials and you two sitting over there, probably boards and commissions are the most important part of county government. And a lot of money is allocated based on what the recommendations that those boards and commissions make to all of you. So it's really important to have people who not only understand what they're doing there, but also the people who are most directly affected by the allocation of that money. So making sure, as you pointed out by statute, that certain groups of people have to have positions on certain, on advisory boards. Thank you.
Thank you. Conservation District's really complicated.
Yes.
Yeah, my understanding for Conservation District, just as we're kind of mumbling back here, I want to make sure the public's aware. We are currently in the process of determining if those who applied are qualified and because there's a process through which the state approves that, that board and we want to ensure that those individuals are qualified. So, so no one has been denied because it's not on the agenda today. There's plenty of openings still remaining that are, that are being considered and there's just, just different process for different boards.
Out of my comment, the botanist in question is my wife. So I can tell you that she has been in touch with Eric Naguski and is probably qualified for whatever, but is getting all her paperwork filled out.
Yeah, and that, we left that on the list, even though there is that extra step to see if we did get anyone else. It's, it's been a hard board to fill, so it was, we thought it was important to leave it out there, even though there were those extra steps.
Hopefully she gets on it, so it'll work out. Okay. On a side, Swatara Township. I think, so for months I've been coming here and one of the biggest topics, even before we had the change of who is the chair, has been transparency. And I like to say that like, I don't know if you guys know the band The Who, but like New Boss, Same As The Old Boss is sort of like the complaints that we heard before, I'm still noticing. And I'm just going to talk about some of the things I asked for, specifically about the clearing of the land and the half a million dollars of a contract. And I understand that is a need, I'm not opposed to it, but what you said is the details will be flushed out later. And I think that I would like details to be flushed out before we vote on money. And not perfectly flushed out, but we also saw a whole bunch of money go to a festival concert that may not even be a concert, it may not be a film, who knows what it is. But I think as someone whose taxpayer dollars, whether they're federal or whatever are being spent, I would really prefer if things were fleshed out before they came here. I also would like to say there was a workshop meeting last week. Every other week, there's different types of meetings. And during these workshop meetings in other bodies of government, Harrisburg City Council is a perfect example, they actually use those time to talk about things that are coming down the pipeline. So it would have been a time to have a miracle for sure come in and answer some questions about this. It also would have been a time, and if you guys watch other councils and stuff, what they do is for a board appointment, they actually bring people in and interview them publicly. That would have been great. As someone who also applied for a board, and I also understand a lot of people might have applied for a board, I'm not, but I will say that I didn't hear anything back. And not only did I not hear anything back, as someone who like applies for jobs and anything, like you want to hear that someone received your stuff. And you also want to hear that it's in progress and what next steps are, and we're not seeing that. What you said, Commissioner Priest, is probably true, that people see this on the agenda and they get excited about applying for these things and that's important. And one of the things that's important is that when they do, you communicate with them throughout the process, what's happening, so that they don't see these things coming up on the agenda and feel like, oh, I don't have my chance. They're just proving, you know, appointing all these Democratic Committee people or whoever they are. I'm not going to, I, I don't know what percentage of these people are Dolphin County Democratic Committee people, but a lot of the people on here are and I am not a Dolphin County Democrat. And so it's very noticeable when you see them up and down. And these are people who get positions everywhere. They're on all types of boards. And one thing I think we need, as Gina spoke to, is community members. Community members who are knowledgeable. There's lots of us who are knowledgeable about things, but we're not running for office, we're not politically inclined in that, in that same type of way, we're more issues inclined. And I really do think that it would be you guys to interview people. And I'm sad that Commissioner Hartwick did not have an opportunity. It doesn't feel like there's a lot of opportunity to interview the people that were going to be on here. There should have been a process and I would love to clarify what is the process and how is it transparent going forward? Because this still feels not transparent. So, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Tom Connolly, Swatara Township. Want to say I wholeheartedly agree that the names on the agenda certainly brought out more people that would be interested. It was the first time they saw it, the agenda came out yesterday at ten o'clock. But I'd also like to say it's pretty apparent that it brought out people who were against people on the agenda. This is nothing new for me. I've been off of boards, I think I publicly came here six years ago and talked about boards. But I, I just want to, want to clear up something. There was an incredible, incredible amount of vacancies after the last election when the three Commissioners were elected. I looked at the boards, some of them had expired terms. I, I saw people that moved out of the county that were long gone from the state that were still listed on the boards. And I think it's really disingenuous today to pretend like this just started when the request came out to contact the, I might get the term wrong, Chief Clerk Pease. That means we went a whole year, last year, under the leadership of Mr. Hartwick with boards that didn't have people on. And he had an entire year to put people on the board. And as soon as other people's names showed up on the list, then the wheels started working. And today he mentioned names of people that he thinks should go on the board. I'm going to say I, I think every, every name was a great person that I know. And that's going to happen all the time. But, but I want to be really clear on this. I raised the issue years ago about a couple people on these boards, Mike Musser and Jeff Haste. And they remained for years. In fact, they even were on until not too many months ago. So it's amazing how certain people, and, and, and the alarm bell was, was ringing back then, inappropriate activity, unethical behavior. I pointed out many years ago that Commissioner Haste at the time was getting money from Prime Care while he sat on the prison board. So it's amazing that we can see what we want to see and we can ignore other things. And to be honest with you, I had absolutely zero expectation of getting on any board. I put my name on for five boards. And that has nothing to do with me being a Democratic Committee person. Mr. Hartwick's a Democratic Committee person also. Had nothing to do with me being a Swatara Township Commissioner. It just had to do with offering something to the community. And I'm still, I'm still going to do that. But I just don't want people here thinking that these boards just suddenly needed to be filled now. We went through all of last year with, with all of these vacancies and I applaud Chairman Douglas for, for, for moving this ahead. But it really only happened when the news started to come out that previous board members that were approved year after year, time after time, multiple boards were putting their hand in the cookie jar and taking money. I'm just going to use my last couple seconds. Commissioner Steele is the Vice President of the Board in Swatara Township. Swatara Township is going through the largest infrastructure highway program that we've seen. Eighty-two taxable properties, forty-two businesses were, were taken off the tax rolls. He's in meetings with state reps, state senator recently, on highway improvements in, in Swatara Township that affect all of Dolphin County. The Eisenhower Interchanges is starting to reach into Swatara Township. And for him not to get on a hats committee, Swatara Township is the third largest municipality. It, it's, it's just absolutely crazy and I notice a pattern. The people that are involved in corruption stay on boards. The people that speak out of it are denied spots. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
I forgot a few things earlier. Gina Vasquez. I, I, I want to talk about.
Excuse me, Ms. Vasquez.
Yes.
We only allow one, one time per.
One time?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, fine. I'll send an email.
I would, I would ask as a, as one board member, not to set precedent, but she's coming back up to allow her to make a comment.
Can you keep it to sixty seconds if we're allowed for that?
It's just a quick.
Are we all in favor of that? Okay, go ahead.
It, it's just a quick asking about when you guys do events to please post them in other language, at least Spanish. I'm sure that when these events are going on, you don't even see that population in these events because they don't know anything about them. I, I, I was walking on Allison Hill the other day and I asked them if they knew who the Commissioners were and no one understood what I was saying to them. And that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none? Take a motion to adjourn? What was that?
Retirement Board.
We do have Retirement Board after.
Still moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion adjourned.